Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 27th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we go to the roll call of members, we do have a bit of a special event tonight. We have a new councilman with us here tonight, Councilman Morse Jones. And so if you, council wouldn't mind, I would, Morse, you mind taking your oath here in front of the council meeting?
With pleasure.
All right, so if you just step forward here with me, we'll administer the oath for you.
I'm the State Chairman. I'm Morse Jones. I'll swear. I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the Indian Ocean, and I will faithfully-
Partially and diligently.
Discharge the duties of the office. Discharge the duties of the office.
Lebanon City Council Member, District 3.
Lebanon City Council Member, District 3. According to the law. According to the law. That's my opinion. Yes, my opinion.
All right, now that Councilman Jones is official, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Sure. Councilman Kincaid.
Present.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Present.
Councilman Robertson.
Here.
Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Wheat.
Here.
Councilman Fleming. Absent this evening.
Absent excuse, he's on service, so, okay.
Thank you.
With that, move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns concerning the previous minutes?
I won't be able to vote on them tonight, since I wasn't here.
Okay, well-
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve in a second. All those fairies say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? Councilman Campbell and Councilman Jones. Okay, minutes are approved, and we'll move on to, so we do have a presentation tonight. We have Unball and Associates with us tonight to present the Financial Comprehensive Plan, so to speak. Where did Brian go?
He's walking up now.
All right, so we'll let Brian finish his walk here, and then we'll give an update of the financial of the city. You're up, Brian, good timing.
Right after that, back.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Brian, go ahead.
All right. So you should have two handouts, the PowerPoint and then the big thick book. The plan is to go through the PowerPoint, and then all the details for what we've put together are in the big book, with all the amortization schedules are in the back, and all kind of the very detailed information over the different years that we looked at, the explanations of how things were put together all in that book. As you've seen, I think most of you have seen one of those before.
Brian, can you speak a little bit more on the microphone for us? They're not hearing you.
Sure. Okay. Is that better?
Yeah, there you go.
All right.
Yeah, we're good.
So, we'll start with just an overview, and some of these slides we're going to go through pretty quickly. There are certain topics like Circuit Breaker that the good news is for Lebanon is not really a big deal. Other places we talk about go through a presentation like this, and that's a much lengthier conversation and impact for those communities. So, most of what you're going to see tonight, if not all of it, is really positive news. So really, the overview, we've talked with the city. Last year, we had a conversation about putting a comprehensive financial plan, I'll probably say CFP at some point in time, that's what that stands for, put that together to take a look at where the city's finances are at. This is really a planning tool, helps you right now, it's something you should, you know, you can update throughout the years. We recommend, you know, updating it with actual information after you go through the process, see how close you were to it, whether there's some anomalies that popped up during a budget year. It's really, should not go on the shelf if you want to make it a useful tool. That's our recommendation. So then, the purpose of the study, look at the current financial situation, then also forecast out your receipts and dispersments. And we went out to 2021, so you're going to see the next three years in there for planning, and we made assumptions, I'll go over those here in just a second. Identify any potential funding gaps. For you guys, you will not really see a conversation about that, and then if we had gaps, we'd have solutions. As I mentioned, it's probably the baseline for, you know, future financial discussions that you have, and then it evolves over time. The next schedule shows all the different funds that are included in the large reports. We're not going to go through every one of those funds tonight. We've had six different funds that we're going to focus on, and these are the main funds, as well as, you know, a couple of funds, the local income tax fund for public safety, that's a newer one, and then also the food and beverage fund. We thought that'd be a good one to go through because of the current bonds under consideration, as well as obviously the general fund and the other funds that have a property tax in So our assumptions for 18 through 21 are as follows. So in 2019, the growth factor for your max levy rates, so that's the six-year non-farm income average, growth average, is 3.4%. We've estimated for 2020, that'll dip down slightly to 3.2%, and then back up in 2021. Obviously, as you get further out, you know, whatever happens this year is going to impact those numbers, and 19 will impact those numbers, but that's really kind of the current trend that we have. So in that 3% to 4% range for annual growth in the max levy, that's what's allowed. In a second, we will go through and actually talk about what our assumption is for the city on your maximum levy. So as I mentioned, Circuit Breaker tax credit for the city of Lebanon is very small, 0.16% this year, it dips down even lower, restimating for next year, and then climbs slightly the following two years. That's an impact, but that's really a nonexistent impact compared to most places, so we won't spend much time on that tonight as well.
Hey, Brian, for some of your other clients, what are they seeing from Circuit Breakers percentage-wise, roughly?
I mean, it's all over, you could have, you know, 15% impacts, you could have 5%. It's really all over the place. And there's some, some communities are going to have bigger impacts in a couple of years. There's some special legislation for Lake County and St. Joe County that left debt out of that calculation, and that rolls off in 2020, so they're about to have a bigger hit up north.
Okay, so we're very lucky to have less than 1%?
You're extremely lucky.
Go ahead, thanks.
Continue on with the assumptions. So, local income taxes, 2018 is based upon the certified amount, and then 2019 is an estimate. The actual final numbers from DLGF, the state will not come out until October, so the number we have in here could change, and we have seen some changes in other counties over the last three or four versions of the estimates they've put out. So the numbers could change, but they're really in the ballpark of where they've been at, so I don't anticipate a material change if they do. And then we held that number constant for 20 and 21 as well. And the miscellaneous revenues for 19 and 20 and 21, we assume there was no growth in those, to keep it on the conservative side. Oops, see, went the wrong way. There we go. And then for dispersments, 2018 is based on your budget. You will see in here, when we get to the park fund, a discussion of additional appropriation that is built into the numbers, so that would be an exception to that. 2019 to 2021, 2% for most of your different fund categories, except for capital, we left that as 0% change in that regard. So if you see, you know, funds available as we go through this, you know, those can be used for capital costs as well. And this is kind of small to read, but this is a summary of the tax rates, and as you can see, in 17, 16, 17, and all the way through 2021, if you go all the way down to the total line item, we've held that tax rate constant at 0.8224. And then, within that schedule, you'll see some funds rolling up and down. The driving factor behind that really are the bond funds, where you have the stormwater bond and interest account, where that payment will change on an annual basis, it's not a flat payment, so that rate will change slightly from year to year, and the same thing for the park bonds, where that fund can change slightly from year to year, so that impacts that rate, and then that would flow through to the other rates as well. So your general fund, and we'll get into more detail here in a second, but for your rates, general fund, it's 0.5109 for 18, and we've estimated 0.5172 for 19. The assessed value is still an estimate, that should be finalized very soon, and so that's what we've built in at this point in time. So then we'll go through each of the different funds. So the general fund, the blue line is our estimated ending cash, and you can see that's a very strong position. The bottom line, the dotted green line, is what we really look at as a minimum that you should have in a fund, really from a rating perspective, that's 15% fund balance. That really is the minimum. We like to see clients with numbers higher than that, but when going through discussions with standard employers, anything below that really starts to send up a lot of red flags. So, for the city, for 2016, that fund balance is about 50%, is what that number represents. In 2017, it was about 46%. And this year, we're estimating it'll be about 41% at the end of the year, and that stays pretty constant over the next four years, then right around that 40% fund balance, based upon the assumptions that we have built into the analysis. The next schedule shows the receipts and dispersments. You know, there's not really too much of a surprise on these schedules, it's really pretty balanced budget, some, you know, balance being spent, or actually some excess last few years of receipts coming in, and that's not surprising when you take a look at your budget, where you underspend your budget typically, so you don't spend 100% of the budget. So in that situation, you're going to have, you know, dispersments are not going to match really up to your receipts at that point in time, so that's not too big of a surprise. So when we go out into the future, we look at 19, 20, and 21, that's assuming you're spending your budget, but if it's historically comparative, the last few years, I think it's been 89, 90% of what you actually spent. So if we did that adjustment, then you would see the same trend in 19, 20, and 21, where the dispersments would be showing up less than the receipts. But the way we build it, we like to do, what if you actually spent your budget, because that's what you're authorizing, and so that, you know, theoretically, it could be what gets spent, so that's why we show it that way. Stop me if you have questions. The motor vehicle highway fund is the next fund to take a look at, and this also, as you can tell, has a very strong balance. For example, in 2016, it was about 117% fund balance, 2017 was about 230%, and then 18, it has dipped down, and that was caused by a couple of factors. One is the moving of two sanitation workers from the sanitation fund over to the MVH fund to get paid. There was about 420,000 of encumbrances prior year, and then the capital outlays were up about $180,000. So, that's why you see that, and it'll be a little bit more evident on the next schedule, but that's why you see that fund balance take a pretty big decrease, is because you've had some movement on, moving some additional costs over to this fund. But even by that number going down, it's still about an 85% fund balance, so it's just fine. So as you see on this schedule, you can see that that jump from 17 to 18, and that really is caused by those three different things that I mentioned, the new personnel, the encumbrances, and the additional capital outlays. And then we assumed for 19 and beyond that it got back in line. Now, you still have, as you saw on the previous schedule, there still is additional fund balance there where you can pay that down for additional capital costs, but this just shows you the baseline. Local road and street funding, this also has a positive trend as far as your balance available funds, you can see that. Started out about at 80%, and then by the time you get out to 2021, it's about 190%. As far as our assumptions for the receipts and expenditures dispersments, we've estimated what the 2019 amounts are for the revenues, and we've held that constant in 20 and 21, so those are estimated to go up slightly from what we are estimating you to receive for 2018. And then for the dispersments, we've assumed that you spend at the same rate as 2018, so we've held that number constant. The park and rec fund is the next fund, and this also has the positive balance. Biggest change here, I mentioned already, the, you can see that estimated ending cash balance decreasing by about $600,000, which is the amount of the additional appropriation. Still leaves about a 30%, 33% fund balance at the end, but that would be what that, that kind of one-year dip in 18 is, and then it's assumed that in 19, it goes back to more normal without that additional appropriation, and they're carried forward. And that's shown on this schedule. So you can see the one-year spike in the dispersments in 2018, and then going forward, receipts and dispersments are almost right on top of each other. This was the new tax that came into effect a couple of years ago, and so, as you can see, this also has a positive fund balance. What we don't show on this is if there's, you know, expenditures down the road, big capital projects, we don't have anything, you know, mapped out, things like that, unless they were within the timeframe that we have here in 19, 20, and 21, but that just shows as far as the increase in that fund balance. But if you skip to the next page, you can see there were some adjustments in 2018 over 2017, where about $1 million in additional dispersments came out in 18 as compared to And then for 19 and beyond, it's about $1,600,000 estimated to come out of there, so that would be generating about $1 million a year in additional revenues out of the public safety fund as we go forward. I think this year was about a $360,000 additional appropriation. So the final fund that we're going to, plan to talk about, if you want to talk about others, we can talk about those as well, but for the food and beverage fund, and this does assume that the bond issue that we're going to also talk about this evening, this does reflect that out in 2021, a small piece of it, but this also has very strong fund balances at this point in time, and this schedule shows the receipts that have been right in that $430,000, $420,000 range, it's pretty consistent, really when you're looking at that number, I think it spiked at maybe 455, but pretty consistent. We've held that number, what we estimate for this year, held that constant through 2021, and then we've put the $500,000 a year in there for dispersments, which the council typically puts in place each year during the budget process, and as you can see, you really haven't spent that much in a given year.
I think we've spent $3,000 so far this year, so.
Did you say 3,000?
3,000.
Okay, so you're a little behind on the dispersments. Historically, you're behind, this is more behind. And then out in 2021, the only change there was a small portion of food and beverage being used for an early payment on the bonds before the tax increment is available, make the payments. So we estimate, where we're at now with the estimates, really about three-year period where the, we need to supplement those debt payments with some food and beverage early on, and then the tip would be sufficient.
What's the worst-case scenario for that?
What was that?
What's the worst-case scenario in those three years?
Well, let's see if I have something. Well, and I would caution the worst case, because until we sell the bonds, I won't be able to tell you what the worst case is, but we're looking at a combined, about $160,000 over those three years out of food and beverage for 2021 and 22. And that number, you know, we'll be able to finalize that when we actually sell the bonds and size the bonds. But that's-
Brian, is that 160 per year?
No, that's total, it's about 45, 80, 45, kind of in that, so. The first year is less, timing, it's because of a timing, when capitalized interest rolls off, and then the next year's a full year, and then the final year is a partial year. So that's total.
Thank you.
So that's what is represented on that schedule. So that's really the funds that we were planning to talk about. So as I kind of mentioned in the beginning, I'll just sit on these real quick. I think best practice is you take a look, what did you think you were going to spend? What did you actually spend, just to kind of see, are there ways that you could reduce appropriations in certain places? If it's systemic and it's always happening someplace, you know, maybe take a look at moving an appropriation around. If somebody just saves money, you know, in a given year, I don't think you penalize them for that for, you know, one-year change, but if it's kind of something more systemic and just don't need that, make, look at change, making a change in that appropriation. As far as when you do your budgets, being pretty close to your revenue estimates is good policy, kind of have that balanced budget. You guys have the benefit where you can have, you know, you've frozen basically your tax rate, and so you are not capturing all of your max levy. For example, in 2018, about $300,000 of your max levy, the city was eligible for, you know, you made the decision, you didn't, you did not need it, so you left that off the table, and we've not built in any assumptions 19, 20, or 21 that you ever go back to recoup that, where you could, you know, take your levy back to that level. And so, but if you do hold the tax rates constant, like we show up there and assume the tax, and assume the assessed values come in as we estimated, by 2021, that annual unused max levy is going to be about $687,000. So, you know, there is room there, for some reason the city needed it, you do have some availability there, but, you know, looking at your finances right now-
Brian, what's the, what's the, I'll say this, but not probably the correct word, but what happens if we, if we're not at maximum levy all the time?
I mean, the biggest impact is on the income tax side, because income taxes are distributed based upon levies, and so if, if all the other units are maxing out their levy and the city's not maxing out its levy, then that proportionate share starts to shift over time. So if, I don't have the exact distribution, let's say Lebanon is 20% of the levy, and then you start to, you know, your max levy's going down, everybody else is going up, then it's 19%, you know? But if income taxes as a whole in the county are growing, you know, your amount could still be staying the same or increasing from year to year, it's just not increasing by as much as it could have if the max levy was fully implemented. I think we've said this a couple of times, it's a planning model, the comprehensive financial plan, so keep updating it, in case you missed it before when I said it. You know, so I think you guys have done a really good job managing where you're at, and just keeping active management of everything, really is the way to go.
So, layman's terms, how would you rate the financial status of the city?
I think it's excellent. I mean, you know, when we had our call with S&amp;P, Standard and Poor's, when we did the previous bonds, I mean, they really liked the financial, as far as the financial situation with the city. The balances are very good, you have a lot of flexibility, which is something they look for, where you have strong balances in a number of different funds, and so if you do need to move something around, you have that ability if, you know, there's something that comes up that needs to be- If, you know, there's something that comes up that needs to be funded, you do have the reserves to fund that. So I think that the city's in very good financial shape at this point.
There's, there's always talk about what our reserve should be. Is it, or should we be around 40, 50% all the time, or, or in reserve? Or is there a low, really a low number that you really shouldn't get below?
Yeah, that's that dotted line on those schedules. The 15% really is the bare minimum. But the way Indiana does their, how Indiana does accounting compared to how other states do accounting, really having something in the 30% range is beneficial as well with the way Standard and Poor's looks at numbers. And I relate a lot of things back to the way Standard and Poor's looks at things. Just because that's, when people talk about, it's the rating of the city, you know, where's the city rated? So that's kind of that, it's that probably 15 to 30%. Having higher is not bad, because that allows you that if there is, if it rains, you have money to help make those payments.
What's our bond rating today?
It's AA plus, right?
Yeah, it was, we got upgraded, right?
AA minus.
Sorry, go ahead, Tony, what was it?
Yeah, it's AA.
AA plus?
Double, it's A++ is what I thought it was.
Yeah.
I thought we made double As.
Is it double A?
I think we're AA plus now, but.
Anyway.
It's a double A rating, whether or not it's got a plus.
The last time they evaluated it, they actually upgraded us.
Yeah, it got two-notch, two-notch increase. So, I mean, it was a very strong rating for the city.
Any other questions for Brian?
I'm good, thank you.
I think this is always good to have this discussion as we're heading into budgets and things to keep in mind.
And you'll probably see some of that information again when Paige is helping with budgets. Act surprised when you see it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Brian, appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay. So that includes the financial presentation at this time. So now we'll move on to old business. The first item I have up here here is Resolution 2018-30, which is the resolution of the Common Council of City of Lebanon approving an economic development agreement concerning the Gateway Marketplace project. So Rob, do you want to introduce this resolution? And then, or I don't know if Brian, you want to touch on this too, or I don't know the order we want to do this? Catherine, I'm sorry, yeah, that'd be, okay. So Rob, you just want to kind of read the, read the resolution first?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, thank you. As we talked about at the last meeting, this is Resolution 2018-30, which is the Gateway Marketplace project. And we had an overview from Ben Bontrager, as well as Catherine Fennello. But this, the developer here is Lebanon Gateway Properties LLC. And they are looking to invest approximately $17 million in redeveloping real property located at the southeast quadrant of I-65 and State Road 32. It's a proposed mixed-use development. And all that is set forth in the economic development agreement, which is before you for approval. The Economic Development Commission, the Redevelopment Commission, and the Building Corporation have each determined that completion of this project is in the best interests of the citizens of the city. In this resolution, you would be setting forth an approval of the economic development agreement in substantially the form that is in Exhibit A, and that the mayor would be authorized to execute an economic development agreement in substantially similar form as attached here, as well as any and all other documents related to it. So again, Ms. Fennello's here to talk about any financing questions you may have, as well as obviously on both.
Hey, Catherine. Yep, you're good.
Sorry, thank you. As Rob discussed, this resolution would give the authority to the mayor to execute an economic development agreement for the Gateway Marketplace project. As Rob also mentioned, the agreement is substantially complete. I believe you received one update last Friday. So I don't know if you have any questions on that. But we're very close to finalizing the economic development agreement. So we want that in place before we move forward with any bond sale or anything like that. So happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
And just to refresh everyone up here and those watching at home, so this is concerns that, mixed-use development at 32 and 65, includes medical office building, proposed hotel, restaurants, B shops, et cetera, et cetera. So we're using the increment that's created from the development itself to pledge back to pay the bonds to construct the road through this, which allows us to, for this property to be developed. And then as a backup, that's where we're proposing using the food and beverage. If there, if there is a gap that, in the timeline of the way the buildings come on, if there's a gap in the increment, the food and beverage is the pledge on this, so. Any questions from, from council or discussion?
I'd, I'd just like to comment a little bit that I know we've had discussions about the use of food and beverage in this position. But there's, you know, with the thought that there's two or three, opportunity, maybe two or three restaurants that could back in there, that would go back in there and help pay that back. I'm not that really opposed to doing that at this time. I did make a, if you remember your, earlier part of this year, I remember coming back from last year's AIM conference was, was one of the things was, don't be afraid to take a risk. And this is one of those risk situations, I think, that we have that we, you know, that we need to try to do. This is something I, I think will be good for the community in that area. We need to develop that area. Somehow, we're going to have to pay for a road to go through there. Whether it was them or someone else, if, if it wasn't someone else and we wanted to market that area, we'd have to change that road structure some way to make it work. So I'm not opposed to, I know food and beverage is going to probably take a hit for a little bit, for three years, but that doesn't start till 2019. So it gives us time to plan and, and think about it and, and to move forward with that. And in time, I believe we get that revenue back. And I just think that is one of these places that I think it'll work out, so.
Food and beverage also has a $1.7 million balance too, as we.
Yeah.
Point out on that, so.
Well, and one more thing is not, not just the new restaurants or food establishments, but it's the existing people out there that contribute to the food and beverage. They're going to see an increase in their business once that development is complete. True. And regarding TIF, I know some people don't like that. But that road that we paid for, out TIF, for the Business Park 25 or 30 years ago, you know, did really good things. So this will do the same thing, but maybe not at that level. But we, we don't know. Once you get something started like that, all of a sudden, things around it will start changing too. So you don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah, and I'll mention to you, you know, part of the challenge with this site is that we do have two large industrial buildings on the site. So the reason we're having to pledge the food and beverage as I kind of fill that gap is because, you know, increment, the TIF is only the increment, right? So when we demo those buildings, we have a hole that we have to fill back with the new buildings. So that's a little bit of a challenge with this site, because it's not a, it's not a brand-new, it's not an old cornfield, right? That didn't, that didn't exist before, right? We're, we're trying to revitalize and rebuild something, so we got a hole to fill. And that's part of the reason why we need the backup too, so. Any other comments from council discussion? Okay.
The only question I have is we're on, well, we're going to, we're building the road. We're not doing any of the demo work, we're not paying for any of that.
It's, it's strictly the bond, the bond proceeds would go to construct the road and the, and the utilities associated with it. So we're not demoing the buildings, we're not.
Yep, well, it's my understanding that part of the road would be going through the building, one of the buildings or part of the building, Ben probably is going to say something. So part of the demo will be done, but it's because we got to put a road right there.
Right, that would include right-of-way clearing, which if there's a road in the way, you have to clear the road. So yeah, the demo, at least a portion of the demo cost could also be eligible for reimbursement.
A small portion.
Yeah, of the two and a half million, yeah, of the two and a half million, that's a small portion of it. The road and underground utilities. Yeah, I think it was maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars of that total that may be associated with the demolition. So the clear majority of that is for the underground utilities and the road construction, sidewalks, lighting, all that good stuff.
But it's fair to say the city's not the one going out and demoing the buildings, Ben?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Any more questions, Keith? Any further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Morris, any thoughts? We threw in the debate on this one.
Just listening.
Just listening, okay.
Getting information.
Okay. All right, any discussions, comment from the public? Nope. Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2018-30.
I make a motion that we pass, Resolution 2018-30.
We have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-30.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those abstaining? Those opposed? Resolution, Resolution 2018-30 passed unanimously, thank you, council. And now we'll move on to Ordinance 2018-14. This ordinance is on second reading, so I'll have Rob introduce it on second reading.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is second reading for Ordinance 2018-14. And again, this is fairly lengthy.
Yeah, I had, I had on the agenda wrong, it's 14, not 12, apologize for that.
And this, this ordinance is authorizing the City of Lebanon to issue economic development lease rental revenue bond, Series 2018, the Gateway Marketplace project. And it approves a lease between the City of Lebanon Public Building Corporation as the lessor and the City of Lebanon Redevelopment Commission as a lesssee, pledging food and beverage tax revenue to the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission for the payment of certain lease rentals and authorizing and approving other actions in connection therewith. And again, as we went through this extensively last time, but Section 1 finds that the council determines the project involves the acquisition, construction, and equipping of an economic development facility, and that this project will create employment opportunities and diversification of economic development for the city. Section 2, we're proposing the financing of all or a portion of the project of certain costs related to the issuance of bonds. And then Section 3 discusses the issuance of the bonds are payable solely from the revenues and receipts derived from the financing documents, and they're hereby authorized. Again, the principle of the bond is not to exceed $3.3 million. Pursuant to the act, the city approves the lease in the form that has been presented and been attached to this ordinance. Again, the city, as Ms. Fennello discussed, and the mayor approves pledging food and beverage tax revenues to the Redevelopment Commission. It goes on to describe that the mayor and the clerk treasurer are authorized and directed to sell the bonds, as well as approved preparation of the preliminary official statement, all the other bond documents and related documents that would be a part of the bond transaction, and that this bond ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption. Again, Ms. Fennello is here to answer any questions that you may have about this, as well as on both.
Okay, thank you, Rob. So Ordinance 2018-14 has now been read on second reading. Any further discussion? Obviously, this is closely tied to the resolution we just passed. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mike.
Based on a question I had from someone who was talking about the TIF in that area, and that is that I nor no one on this council is going to benefit financially from anything out there. We do not own anything near there. So this, I just want to put that out there in case someone was getting some faulty information, that we are not benefiting from this financially at all.
I would also point out, I don't have anything in that area as well, so.
Nobody up here, so.
Yeah. Love how those rumors start. Any more discussions, questions, comments? Any public comment, concerns? Okay, seeing none, would entertain an ordinance, or would entertain a motion concerning Ordinance 2018-14?
I would make a motion that we pass Ordinance Number 2018-14 as listed.
We have a motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those abstaining? Those opposed? Okay, Ordinance 2018-14 passes, passes unanimously, thank you, council. Okay, I wanted to keep it light tonight, so I don't have any other new business on my agenda. Anything from you guys?
I got a question for Brian.
Yeah, sure.
Hey, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Here, here a couple of months ago, we were presented a bunch of projects by our Parks Department. A lot of these projects are things that just have needed to be done for years, and they total $2 or $3 million. What's, what's the best way that we might be able to fund some of those projects with, with another park bond of some kind? Or should we use some of the revenue that we have on hand? Or, or my first thoughts, all my first thoughts were to try to use part of food and beverage money to back the bond, to pay the bond with over time or whatever. What, do you have any recommendations or anything? Words of wisdom?
Those are all possible solutions. I mean, on the food and beverage side, if this, you know, the bond that you just talked about, if it goes through and it has the payments kind of close to what we thought it would be, yeah, there's not a lot left really in the food and beverage area to, to back a bond at that point in time. Now, as the food and beverage from this development picks up and takes off, and your food and beverage number goes from $430,000 a year to $600,000, you know, when it goes up, then that creates additional capacity. But in the meantime, there, there's, you know, there'd be some capacity there, but not for a size of a, you say $3 million a project costs? Probably not. I mean, you could.
Probably not that big.
What was that?
Probably not that big.
Okay, well, I mean, we'd have to look at, but you could, you know, if you did the property tax side, the thing to remember with that, then instead of, your, your tax rate would go up from the 82 cents.
I just asked.
But that's a possibility. I mean, we've seen parks done with income tax, we've seen it done with food and beverage, we've seen it done with property tax. We've seen TIF in some places used for that as well. But your, your TIF right now is pretty well spoken for as well, as far as a long-term bond. But I mean, we could take a look at, you know, scenarios if you wanted to.
Okay.
Talk more about that.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Any other new business? Okay, we'll move on to claims then. Any questions, comments, concerns about the claims?
No, sir.
Okay.
Make a motion, will you approve claims?
We have a motion to approve the claims. And a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, any discussion announcements? Okay, would move on and would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Well, before we, I make that motion, I want to make sure we welcome Morris and, and we've, he came at a right night, where he's got a whole handful of homework reading material. Walk him aboard and.
Well, maybe he should make the motion.
I was just saying, you would make the motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we are adjourned, thanks for watching. And also, if you want to join us, our budget workshop is tomorrow at 5:30. And our next city council meeting will be September 10th.